Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, January 15, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website and for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is rule call. Will the clerk please take the rule?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Mr. Mosley.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comments. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. We do not have any registered speakers, so anyone wishing to speak before council can approach the podium. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's up in the Hill District, the tall building at the top of the hill. It's a cold, cold day. And you know what? I believe that we all should say a prayer for the homeless. I feel for them. They have nowhere to go. And we, as citizens, and I believe as City Council, we could do better for them. They can't help themselves, just like I can't help myself keep coming down here to try to tell Jens to please listen to us when we stand at the podium. Please do not go back in the audience and talk to them. Please do not talk amongst each other. Please do not use your computers, your iPhones, or whatever at the table. No electrical devices should be there. Like you said, if someone told me, "Well, I've got to take care of my business," you have an aide that's back there in the office that's supposed to help you, not you sitting at the desk. You know what? I go to speak at county council. There's 15 of them, and they all sit there. When they got up and left, one of them left and went to the bathroom, the whole audience started hollering. They had to explain what happened, why he left. When Jens get up and leave the table, we don't have some time. It's not a forum, but you're taking, you passed the bills. I've been coming here so long, I've learned from what Jens having done. It's not that I've studied, but just watching Jens, and I'm really tired. And I guess, I had started to come down, and I had said, and I'm praying coming down and saying, "I'm not going to, I'm not going to be sort of boisterous or loud." I try not to be, but that's a part of me. I want you to understand that because you make the decisions about our lives, do you understand that? When you elected officials made that the policeman, if he felt threatened, he could just kill us. When I seen Anton running and look back, and he shot and killed him to death, and I said, "It was a massacre." But Jens made the decision, if a cop feels threatened, just by looking at him, you feel threatened? With me talking, I guess you feel threatened. I'm telling you that I'm fighting for our lives, not just mine. If I die today or tomorrow, the way my son died and what I've been going through, I wouldn't care. At one time, I was afraid of death. No longer. When I seen the way my son suffered, I'm not afraid of dying. If God take me today or tomorrow, I did what I could to try to tell Jens that we are human beings, even though my skin may be darker and I may talk louder. I go through the same thing. If you cut me, I'm going to bleed. When that blood comes out, it's going to be dark red, even though you're white. So please understand. Another thing I want you to understand, when I became a Red Cross instructor, I saw we had to teach the black kids how to save your own lives. That's why I'm talking down, I'm trying to save our lives.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine. I return to send dirty voodoo hexes curse sent towards me 100 million billion trillion googolex, and whoever sending it north will move into a lake of fire in Jesus' name. I'm going to continue to pray. The authority I walk in is the authority of Jesus. It is not mine. It's not based on my works. It's not based on my name, which was stolen, the real one. It's based on the name of Jesus. Psalm 62:6 says, "He only is my rock and my salvation. He is my defiance; I shall not be moved." Psalm 125:1 says, "Those who trust in the Lord are like Mount Zion, which cannot be shaken but endures forever." No matter how much you attack me, block me, or keep me from being who I am, or who God created me to be, I'm going to stand. I'm going to stand. The only reason I'm still standing here is because of the blood of Jesus. There's no other reason that I can give glory or honor to. Whoever has conservatorship over me, illegal guardianship over me, illegal social security checkster collecting for me, which is locked in the court system, I promise you, justice will be served. I am capable of taking care of myself, as you can see. I may be homeless, but I'm not helpless. I'm only homeless by default, by what's being done to me, what's being covered up, what's being hidden. You can't hide anything from God. We are lights in darkness, lights to this world. The light of the world is in me, and I am a light to the world. My light will shine, and by my light, I will glorify God. He named me Sunshine to shine a light on the injustice being done to me. Whatever was taken from me, my inheritance, my trust, whatever has my name on it. Money, property, businesses, cars, trucks, whatever, it will be returned to me 100fold. Proverbs 13:20 says, "Walk with the wise, and you become wise; associate with fools, and get in trouble." I think it's amazing to be standing here today. By the grace of God, for His glory, and I'm so grateful. Thank you so much. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Stanley Andrew Low. I live in Manchester, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Last night, Dan Lavelle came in to meeting in Manchester at a RCO, Manchester Citizens Corporation, with a policeman at the door with a letter sent to me telling, "I'd better not come." So I was barred from meeting. Policeman standing at the door. I'm here today to tell Dan, "No, I fear no man. I fear no man, I fear no meeting." This body, several years ago, this body confirmed me as the Assistant to the Mayor for Neighborhood Housing Policy Planning. I ran the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh for seven years. In addition to that, I was Senior Vice President at Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation. I was Vice President of the National Trust of Historic Preservation in Washington, D.C. I was a board member of the Bureau of Historic Preservation for this Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I have the credentials. There's nobody in this room right now that knows more about affordable housing than I do. Nobody, but me. Yet there is not a housing task force put together for the Esplanade Project in Manchester, but we greet these people coming to Manchester. I think it's absolutely asinine and obscene. Last night, Dan didn't even know how many people lived in Manchester. I doubt very seriously if you know how many people lived in your prospective districts. I doubt very seriously if you know what the poverty level is in your district. Well, I'm going to tell you what it is in ours. Right now, they say that they'll build 60 units of affordable housing for the Esplanade Project at 80% of medium income. I doubt very seriously whether or not you know that in Manchester, the black medium income for the average family is $34,205. The median income for white families living in Manchester is $94,250. These are the facts, not mine, yours. United States government says these facts. Oh, you want to talk about poverty, the poverty level? Yes. I'm angry because people are not taking time to even put a task force together to look at affordable housing issues that's going to come up. We haven't even bothered to benchmark best-in-class housing nationally to see what would be applicable coming to our neighborhood. In Manchester, oh, got to tell you this number. 6% are below the poverty line. 375 households receive food stamps. Black families is 11%, white families, zero. Zero. But yet and still, we're going to spend $750 million right next to our neighborhood. Yet in closing, that's not the worst part. You've already approved the North Shore right next to where you're going to put the $650 million. You already approved that, and there was no community meetings. I said to you when I first came here, "I don't care how long it takes, I am going to come back over and over again to let you know that African-Americans of Manchester do matter, they do count, there are people below the poverty line, and yes, again, I will tell you, there's not been one new affordable housing, public housing unit built in Manchester in 10 years."
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. Apologies, we have P-cards that I missed before that, so we do have P-cards this week. Do I have a motion on P-cards?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
P-cards are approved. Now we move on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. New Papers, Bill 1376.
Bill 1376, Resolution authorizing the mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the National Association of County and City Health Officials for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the post-overdose training in trauma-informed practices in the amount not to exceed $20,000 for training and support of the city's Office of Community Health and Safety.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1376, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
New Papers, Bill 1379, Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements to set forth financial obligations and maintenance responsibilities for the pedestrian facilities with PennDOT for local costs associated with work to be done on State Route 400, North Dallas Avenue, Bennett Street, and A-45 ADA ramps constructed and inspected by PennDOT, and further providing for reimbursement to PennDOT of the estimated costs not to exceed $13,990.44.
Motion.
Oh, motion to approve, apologies.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1379, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilperson Sharland.
New Papers, Bill 1375, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional services agreement with UPMC Benefits Management Services, Inc., doing business as work partners for services relating to providing third-party administrative services of the City of Pittsburgh's Workers' Compensation Program for costs not to exceed $5,200, or, I'm sorry, $5,2,764 over the course of four years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to...
Councilman Wilson.
Okay. Thank you for coming to the table. I suspect I know what this, what this is by the title, but I just want to understand a little more about what it is.
I'm sorry?
Sure. So, good morning. Paula Callerman, Human Resources Director, and Pam Petroott, Assistant Director of Employment Compensation Benefits. This is the administration of our Workers' Compensation Program, and this was out for RFP and work partners who we've had a great relationship for multiple years now. They were the actual only bidder, and therefore, of course, an easy decision to reengage with them on this as the incumbent.
And, so, this is, how am I understand, like, those work partners, they don't read the bill?
They have an arm of service that coordinates the medical claims management of work-related injuries, which is separate and apart from the active and retiring benefit.
So we pay $5 million for the management of distribution of funds?
Yes, and over the course of that contract, they have essentially earned us savings in an equal amount.
Yeah, how long is the contract for?
This contract is for the duration until 2028. The increases over year over year are very modest, 2.9% per year to include over 2024.
Okay, so they'll be managing the district?
As they have, they manage the subrogation, manage the...
The what?
Subrogation. And they ensure litigation claims and cases are closed and filed, and I believe the fiscal impact statement, as well as the summary of service, was included in the legislation, so I don't want to go over that again, if you've reviewed that.
And over the course of that time, we said 2028, right?
I'm sorry?
It goes till 2028, the contract? So over the course of the three years, we pay $5 million. Do you have a rough estimate of how much we pay in compensation to the workers?
I would have to...
I'm sorry?
I would have to get that information and get it to you.
That's fine, that's not critical. I was just curious. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
That's it, that's all I have.
Any further discussion? I do have one question. Do, do we have any idea why there's only one respondent to the RFP?
It's typical that, given municipalities and the risks perceived through public safety and fire, that it is a risk to manage the complexity of the programs and the databases that are required to manage these types of services, both governed by law as well as administrative procedure. There are few organizations that have the capacity to do that, first of all. UPMC is by far the largest, most organized, and well-structured organization to proceed with that, so it's not uncommon. They serve several municipalities here in the area, to include the county. And we can't influence who is not going to bid on the RFP. We just can't. We did extend the contracting period to bid by several weeks in hopes that any questions that we had would be answered and we would receive a response, but unfortunately, there were not any other bidders. But that isn't to say that they haven't done an outstanding job in working with us and coordinating our claims management.
Sure. Yeah, and I understand we can't control who responds. I was just trying to get a little bit of insight, and that's helpful.
Yeah, it's a very complex process.
And my only concern is that we wouldn't be getting then, you know, the competition to the extent that there is competition in the market when there's response, that we wouldn't be getting the best deal, but if we can't control it...
Well, one of the things that I think in this particular area, from a workers' compensation standpoint, just to, to speak to that, while competition is outstanding, as evidenced by Wegmans maybe coming into the giant nagle market, hopefully, the workers' comp, there is the potential for a focus simply on the costs of the organization, the potential risk to the employer for moving to another vendor and losing the intelligence and the capability to defend the employer. It requires a lot of knowledge, history, and be able to manage these things effectively. So while competition is good, this is one area of business that we would be best served if we manage them and hold them accountable, as opposed to allowing market to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Really helpful answer. Okay. Was there any further comment first round? I know Councilman Wilson had a second round. Okay, Councilman Wilson.
Thanks, and I appreciate the Wegmans comment, although I wish they were moving to Pittsburgh instead of Cranberry.
Uh-oh, that is Pittsburgh, I guess, now.
Oh, no. All right, so who had the contract prior?
UPMC.
Because they've always had it.
For several years, I would have to look back.
So if they weren't here, what would we do?
Um, if they weren't there, we would be having to ask and answer other questions besides this, as a community and as a city.
I mean, are there, like, national, you know, entities that are like, "Look, we'll just, you know..."
There actually aren't.
Like, we'd have to contract with some Canadian company? I'm serious, like, what...
In the competitive analysis that we've done...
You know, I mean, not every city has a UPMC, so I'm just curious.
In the competitive analysis that we've done within the organization, that wouldn't be feasible to go to Canada or somebody such as that.
Just like you said Wegmans, I just said that.
But we do just, I take this very seriously. I've been in compensation and benefits since 1984 and with multiple employers, and I appreciate the jest, but, and I do take very seriously the...
Yeah, but if UPMC wasn't here, you're like, not every city has, my point is, not every city has a big...
There are other organizations out there. Quite honestly, I believe that they have done such a stellar job for the city that the information that is released in the RFP, when other organizations look at it and they see what the work would be required to do that, they would not be able to make any money on it. They would be taking a significant loss. This is not a moneymaker for UPMC, for us. We are not.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I was just curious on some of those details. Thanks a lot.
Be as curious as you like, you're welcome. Thank you for the questions.
Great. Any further discussion? Oh, did you, oh, sorry, Councilman Coghill.
Not my curiosity has peaked, but, so I guess my question is, what do they manage? They manage the distributions, do they manage, what is it that they do?
The entire workers' comp process. There's an internal function that is performed within the city, okay? The claims management of the process, the litigation of that process, the collaborative work with the doctors to get the employee back to work, the attorneys that specialize in this, as well as negotiating contracts and outstanding claims, is a significant part of that. We don't have the expertise as the city...
Do they decide the amount of the claim?
As far as the amount of the claim, I do not believe so, no. That is something that, when you get to the negotiation process of that, I've only been in two meetings in my short tenure here with the organization since I started to witness that, so I don't feel like I can fully comment on that. We can get more information if necessary.
Surely, they make money. I mean, they don't do it for the money.
They make money in other areas. This is definitely not one of them.
So they do this work probably to enhance another area where they are profitable, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sure.
Okay. Okay, it's a little bit confusing.
Plus, they're not paying taxes.
I assume we need it, and, yeah.
That's one, one other.
We definitely need it. Feel free to reach out to me for any more specific questions.
If the relationship, yeah. If the relationship wasn't positive, we, we wouldn't be here with this. But yes, Paula, I'm sure can answer other questions.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1375, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
New Papers, Bill 1377, Resolution amending Resolution 841 of 2023, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with core business technologies for software, equipment, and services related to payment, processing, and cash-sharing systems for the Department of Finance and the Bureau of Police by extending the contract by one year and increasing the approval amount by $98,955 for an amended total cost not to exceed $396,056.60.
Questions, hit free.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1377, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
New Papers, Bill 1378, Resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement or agreements providing for the transfer of funds not to exceed $7,904,053.42 to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories, equipment support, infrastructure, and professional services for use by City of Pittsburgh departments.
Do you want to make a motion? It's your bill, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
Second. And so, I know, I understand that there is the desire to amend this bill slightly regarding the end-of-year true-up for this and to add some, some funds to it. This is some, something that I, we can, well, we have it ready to go now, or we can digest it today and, and make an amendment at the council meeting on Tuesday. It's chair's prerogative, or it's the committee chair's prerogative.
Motion to amend now.
Motion to amend now, okay.
Thank you.
So it's, you're receiving the amendment before you now.
Time down, perfect.
And once...
Goes up 2,000, huh? Just goes up 2K?
Once we have the amendment before us, we can invite anyone to the table to explain it if necessary. Aside from our, our council budget chair, do we have others in the audience ready to speak to this? Okay, so in case we wanted to learn, learn more, okay.
Furman Maurice, Senior Manager, Fleet Services.
Can you, can you explain to us what this amendment does? Thank you for coming this morning.
Amendment is, the amendment in front of you is two reasons. To add the Public Safety Director as a signatory. We trust in Lee to make decisions regarding life and death each day. I believe adding him to a signatories for the ELA Board would be beneficial. Bigger than that, we are changing a few of the smaller numbers as far as the amendment. That, I believe that one was $500 and another one was about $2,200, that we are just adding to the register to make sure we are counting.
And could you elaborate just a bit on the benefits of... And could you elaborate just a bit on the benefits of adding the Public Safety Director as a signatory?
Well, at any point in time, trying to get, tracking down signatures from busy directors and busy people is always a hassle. So adding respected and trusted people to that list that we designate to, to make those decisions, I mean, it's only helping the process move forward a little faster.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this, on this amendment?
Well, not on the amendment, just on the bill in general.
Please, if someone can please remind me, have we actually had an motion to amend? Did you make a motion to amend? Okay, so discussion on amendment, but I'm happy to discuss it though. So I think it was actually Councilman Wilson first, and then Councilman Coghill.
Thanks for being here. I don't see anything about Public Safety Director being a... So the mayor, the Director of Public Safety, oh, okay, so they added that line. Sorry, I was just so focused on the $2,000.
I thought we were getting confused with another one, I'm sorry.
The $2,000, I was so focused on, on that, so, okay. But yeah, I'll wait for other discussion.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, followed by Councilman, Councilperson Charlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Furman, I don't think we've met. I'm on the Equipment Leasing Authority Board, and I apologize. I've not been very present as of late at the meetings, but I count on Peter. He's also serves and he fills me in on certain things. So this money, you know, when I was Chair of Public Works, we set forth to lease vehicles throughout winter. Is that the bulk of this?
No, sir.
Oh, okay, so what are we, what are we leasing?
Currently, we lease fire vehicles and small other vehicles. We do maintain rental units through the, through the winter for snow removal.
Right, that's what I'm referring to.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's been three, four years at least, I think, that we've been doing that. And I know we've continued to do that.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so outside of Public Works, that we, for the snow removal, that was really the main crux of that. Outside of that, do we lease other vehicles?
Fire department vehicles.
Fire department.
Yes, we, we lease at least two different fire apparatus.
Smaller vehicles?
No, sir. Full, full pump.
Is that right? I didn't even realize that, yeah. Do we know what it is to lease a fire engine? Do you know the amount, what it costs yearly, or is it...
Oh, yes, absolutely. And in fact, just sent over a report to the ELA Board that outlines costs per department per year and each, I guess, category, broken down from there.
Okay, so, so we're still leasing the vehicles for Public Works? And that was really to be through winter, but I think now we're just keeping them year-round. Is that correct?
No, that is not correct. We, we do only lease the snow vehicles. They will be returned after snow season.
It's like a four-month?
Yes, sir.
Lease or so? Okay, okay. So that's, we got, we got Public Works and we have fire apparatus?
Yes, sir.
And that's it?
As far as my recollection at this point, yes, but I could check into it further.
That's okay. And 7,900,000, is that?
For the purchase of vehicles for the 2025 year.
Oh, okay. What vehicles? How many?
I would have to give you, I would have to check into exact number, but it is various vehicles that are needed amongst the, the city's fleet.
Police cruisers?
Police cruisers, not specifically, but at least...
Because we made a purchase last year.
So we're looking pretty good on police cruisers, but there'll be police special vehicles that'll be needed. The bulk of the budget is due to replacing aging apparatus, your ambulances, your older fire trucks, and some other much-needed
I know we're waiting, we're waiting on an ambulance or so.
We are.
Yeah, paid for that. Paid for. Or is that in here?
Well, there's another, there's budgeted another ambulance purchase as well, but yes.
There's a one for a new one coming in, and we're still waiting on, because of supply chain, really. We're waiting on ones that we already ordered and already have paid for.
That's great.
Two of them? Is it two?
For, well, it's actually three.
Three. So, so we'll have four new ambulances, ones, three that we're waiting on and one in this new package.
Correct. And if you want to count the ambulance remounts we are planning to release as well, we should be, you know, making a pretty good impact on EMS fleet fairly soon.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, and I know Director Gilchrist would be glad to hear that as well, because I know the police department, and we did, we, we made great strides, I felt, over the last couple of years with the police cruisers and things, even though we're still short. But I feel like EMS is the most significant, highest of importance right now, so...
Since I have your attention on this, I will, I would ask the board to be creative and find ulterior ways to invest in the city's fleet. As of, we are standing right now, it is in a deplorable state. You have over 486 vehicles that are over the age of 10 years old. What I would remind you and bring to your attention is that as these vehicles age, those costs to maintain these vehicles will continue to increase.
You are preaching to the choir.
And, and I understand.
Yeah, I got you, no, no doubt. I mean, I know we invest $6 million a year, we should...
This is the time.
We did a study probably before you, I think. How long have you been there?
I've only been in this position for six months. I have seen the study from the former fleet manager.
And that's just 22 million or so a year we should be putting into a city our size, a fleet of our size. But we've been putting 6, 7 million in, and as you said, when these vehicles get to be eight, 10 years old, then they become significantly expensive to repair.
The city's fleet size is currently right under 1,300, and like I said, 486 that are over 10 years old.
Right, right. I know, I see them. I see Public Works, dump trucks, everything.
And that would be the, one of the biggest departments that needed to be replaced.
Leasing the vehicles, I will tell you, at the time, I'm, at least my intention as a board member was to just get us through win, a couple winters until we could, you know, re-up our fleet. But we haven't done that, so we just continue to lease.
Well, the goal of a fleet manager would be to spread the cost of investment over as long as period as you can. So I am in agreeance with leasing vehicles when, when, when we can, to save the money that we can.
Right, right. What department do you feel is most in need? Is it EMS?
Department of Public Works. They have over 85 vehicles currently that need to be replaced. And we rely on them.
Like yesterday?
Absolutely.
Yeah, like all the time, basically. Not only in the winter, in the summer too, as well.
And we need to be able to support them.
Winter is exasperated, though, of course, when we get a couple inches of snow and a truck breaks down or we don't have enough vehicles or there's too many in the shop. So, so we're most in need, Public Works, because of the four ambulances that we have coming, you feel that'll be stabilized if EMS.
Yes, I, I believe that with the changes to the fleet and the plans currently, yes.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that, because to me, there's no other department than EMS where we need to make sure they get to and from emergencies.
Well, well, if there's someone that you will likely end up using in your lifetime, it will be the Department of EMS. Sorry. But I would like to thank you for bringing attention to the need that also is getting us on the right path as far as potential investment.
I agree, and I know for 25, I can't remember the amount that we budgeted. Was it $6 million for vehicle acquisitions, or?
I believe, I think you're close to that, but I believe it's pretty close to the number on the paper there.
Yeah, right, right, right. Well, hopefully, in the years to come, that we can, you know, manage to find the funding to at least get us to 15 or so million dollars a year, so we can just keep afloat. But I agree with your assessment. We are underwater and, and, you know, dire straits as far as our vehicles go across, really, the, the spectrum, whether we're talking about EMS, fire, you know.
You are correct, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you recognizing the issue there and bringing it to my attention as well. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman, I know that our Council Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, was also raising his hand in case there were any additional questions that went unanswered or that you wanted to have answered.
Well, I'd love to have Peter up here if he would join us and have your perspective.
Cheers.
Good morning. Peter McDevitt, City Council Budget Director and ELA Board Treasurer. Yeah, right, Budget Boy. So I don't know if there's anything I could add, but I'll just say Furman has done an excellent job of explaining. I mean, this is not a new situation. He caught on to it very quickly, obviously. But yeah, the, this, this is just the annual resolution, and I think we're still on the amendment, adding the Public Safety Director, mostly because we're using his money. So there's a lot of money coming out of Public Safety.
I have no problem with that. I mean, if it's somebody, you know, and he's typically here, so...
Yeah, and adding the, like, $2,200, because that was just shoring up the, the budgets from December. So we saw there was a little bit of extra money in the Secondary Employment Trust Fund that should be going towards vehicles. So we're making sure every dollar that we can put towards the fleet is going towards the fleet.
And Furman, again, I'm, I'm sorry, I haven't been, we just met, and I'm sorry I haven't been active as of late. I used to go to every meeting, but I kind of threw my hands up in the air, honestly, after like we decided to put $6 million, and I thought, eh, so. But I appreciate your honesty, and I, and I really do appreciate, like you said, Peter, you seem to have a grasp of where things are, and you're not sugarcoating it, which I really appreciate, so.
Well, thank you, sir.
You should see the Power VI dashboards he put together. It'll blow your mind.
Really? Yeah, yeah. I don't know what a Power VI dashboard is, but I'm looking forward to seeing it. Yeah, good.
This is gonna be great.
Good deal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Charlin, followed by Council, Councilperson Charlin, followed by Councilperson Warwick.
Thank you for being here. Obviously, you know, I share the concern of our fleet. Hearing from Chief Gilchrist about how frequently our ambulances are breaking down should, should be something that, you know, rises to like level of like hair-on-fire alarm for all of us. And, you know, so I, I'm, you know, I'm glad to see that we're continuing to fund this. It, it is not enough, and, you know, it's one of those things like every dollar we're spending on, on other things, you know, this is, these are, these are the trade-offs we're making right now. And, you know, ambulance is for sure. Yesterday in, in a snowstorm, we've got conversations about that, which leads me to, I, I know that I'm sure you're in consultation with the director, and I think the director does a fantastic job, but I've toured my Public Works facilities, and I, I do think there's often a disconnect, and this is true in any organization, between the folks doing the work and management. And, you know, for example, in my 4th Division, which is in the Strip District, you know, unfortunately, unfortunately, still for...
Still to change.
Yeah, at some point, at some point, we'll, we'll get past that site. But in the Strip District, in my district, you know, specifically in Knoxville and in the South Side slopes, we've got very narrow streets, very steep streets, and they do not have a pickup truck that is small enough to plow these streets. They have to usually borrow it from a different division or borrow it from, I believe, last weekend it was the Carpenters. So I, I do worry sometimes that, that, just like, you know, in any organization, that from the, the person doing the work and the person ordering the, the stuff to do the work with, there's a disconnect there. So are, how, I mean, are you in the divisions at all, or are you talking to?
I do.
The individuals there?
We meet with each division, division regularly to address their needs as far as service and repair, as well as discuss potential acquisitions. So, yes, but unfortunately, sometimes budgets are thin. I mean, we, we stretch as far as we can as far as, to get the needs addressed. It's gonna require some creative, creative problem solving to, to get us through to where we need to be.
I, I just, I, you know, for example, like, the division was like, we just got the, you know, these new extended cabs. Well, that's great for the summer when they're trying to do clean and leans and, and the trailer's broken down, so they have to throw, you know, additional things in the back of a, of an extended cab. It's not great in the winter when the extended cab makes it so you can't drive up, up, up a hill. And so I'm, you know, I, I'm very cognizant that, that I need to be spending more time there and, you know, with the, the folks doing the work. But I, I do hope the people that are actually doing the ordering are, are doing that. And actually, my, my pledge to them when I was there was that, that I would talk to you about, you know, making sure that they're consulted, making sure that they've got the materials they need to serve us best.
I believe part of the problem when, when you encounter situations like that, being such a specialized vehicle with a specialized need, that when the, when the light is on you and you, you have the, sometimes you have to acquire the vehicles that you're gonna use more, more often, and those specialized needs, they'll just have to, you know, will have to make do to get there. But as we gain the attention, as we increase the investment into our fleet, I believe that those more specialized requests can be, can be addressed.
Yeah, I, I, I guess my thing is just like, who, who is making those requests? Should, should it be me? Should it be, you know, should it be the mayor? Should it, should it be folks on the ground? Like, who, who is it that makes the, the request to you, or this is, this is the tool we need for this task?
The role of a fleet manager generally is to discuss operations with departments, assign priorities as far as maintenance and repair. So that, generally, their request would be, come from a department. And most likely, the director of the apartment as, as his staff directs it. From that, my recommendation goes to the board as far as what we are actually purchasing. And then the decision is, is made above me.
Yeah, and I mean, there's a, there was another conversation, and I'll be honest, I don't quite understand it, about the types of transmissions that the plows have, and a little bit of, was above my head there. But, you know, I, I know that that was something that, that they're, they're very concerned about, that, you know, they're blowing through transmissions as they're plowing snow, and that, you know, I, I, I might be wrong about this, but I think it was maybe a manual would work better for them than, than the automatic. And, and I could be wrong on that. Do not...
You're close. Generally requesting vehicles with heavier-duty transmissions to, to handle load that we are asking them to.
Yeah.
Generally, that is discuss in the spec for the vehicle before purchase. So that would also come from the department as well.
Okay. Yeah, I, I may, and maybe that becomes the conversation with the director, making sure that he's...
Comfortable with the spec?
Well, talking to the, the boots on the ground, you know, and, and making sure that they've got, they've got what they need. I've also had a problem with, you know, broken street sweeper for, well, actually, a series of broken street sweepers in the 4th Division for all of last year. We've, we really didn't have any street sweeping in the 4th Division. Finally, we do have a street sweeper operating now, but, but getting the opportunity to like see how this jostles people around, and I know that it creates injuries from that. You know, I, I think, just think there's a, there's a lot of investment and, and a lot that we need to put into ELA, and we need to help you be able to do, do the job here.
Think about it like this. When you see your shoe untied, do you bend down and tie it now, or do you plan to tie it later?
Yeah, right, right. Yeah.
That's where we are.
Yeah, well, to, I could torture that analogy a little bit more, but I think that, you know, because you don't tie your shoe right now, now you've got a twisted ankle and a medical bill associated with that. I think that's the situation we're in right now, so.
I understand as well.
I do want to ask another question. So we're adding the Director of Public Safety to this, this list here. The Director of Public Works is not on that. You know, I know that E, between Public Safety and Public Works, those are our two largest vehicle needs. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Why is the Director of Public Works not listed here? And is the Director of OMB hard to, to tie down for a signature?
It's really just because of the budgets that it's coming out of. It's coming out of OMB's budget, Public Safety's budget. There's no money coming directly from DPW.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess this is just, and you may not have a, but just sort of back of the napkin. If money was no object, right, if money was no object, how long, let's, let's just say we could write you a giant check... If money was no object, right, if money was no object, how long, let's, let's just say we could write you a giant check and you could buy all the vehicles that you needed, um, how long would it take to actually get those vehicles? So like, what's the supply versus, you know what I mean? Like the supply versus the money?
Um, your wait, your wait times for bills on your heavier duty equipment, you are probably talking a year or two years out as far as your, your, your bigger dump trucks, your fire equipment. Um, even your, your ambulance bills are, are going to take at least two years to, to complete.
And smaller, what about smaller vehicles like the public works trucks and?
Um, the factories have been ramping up production. We have been getting those vehicles, um, somewhat faster than we have in the past, but even then we are talking under a year to a year and a half for, for most of the fleet.
Okay, okay. So that's something just to know. And then, I mean, again, this is like, and if, and it, what would you need, again, back of the napkin, what would you need to buy everything that you, that we need to buy?
We, we've calculated different uh, spending levels and we have different levels of investment, but the number of twenty-two million was
Twenty-two million?
Was fairly accurate.
Every year.
This is every year.
That's what we should be doing every year.
Every year.
Every year.
Okay, um.
And keep, keep in mind that we have a hole to climb out of, so we have quite a few vehi- quite a few vehicles that need to be replaced just for the cost of maintenance alone. Um, the age of the vehicle alone. They are, these vehicles are in operation. Yes, we are keeping them running, but they are, they are starting to show the signs of these ages and the costs are continuing to increase.
So, so, okay, so just like, I mean, like in, in, in a perfect world, if we were putting in twenty-five million dollars a year, then we could sort of have the vehicles we need.
Yeah, and then we would still need to be able, I mean, it would take a while to get out of that hole.
Right.
And we would still need to put that much in just to make sure that we don't fall back into it.
Right, right. Um, okay, I mean, I'm just sort of thinking about this and the other thing is, is I know, like, you know, ambulances, I mean, I, you know, obviously ambulances are like a year-round thing. I get that. Um, you know, when I'm thinking of public works and of course, we're looking at the snow now and everybody, I mean, you know, like this is, you know, the, the public is like, where are, you know, leaving these, but the reality is with snow in particular, right, and I don't, is, um, like if we need more tr- I mean, I, I would be curious to explore. Well, let me take a step back. First of all, I think when it comes to like what vehi- what the vehicles are and which vehicles we should buy and how big they should be and how sma- like I, uh, my general tendency is to just want to let the experts who are doing the work make those decisions, right? Like I don't see counsel, I mean, it's, it's interesting, do you know what I mean? It's interesting to learn about and, you know, I know more about salt mixes now than I probably care to, but, you know, um, uh, so from that perspective, kind of like, I'm glad that it is the departments that are saying, this is, this is what we need, right? Whether they're
That's correct.
Getting it or not, so that's good. Um, but uh, also just about, especially when we're looking at snow, which really is like this very small window. I mean, this is at least looking at the past, like three, four, five years, this is, this is the worst snow that I can remember and I've been in Pittsburgh for ten years. And this snow actually, i- i- it's rough, right? It feels bad, but it, it, it isn't bad as far as snow can be or has been like in the past twenty years, you know?
That's good to know.
So.
My first winter in Pittsburgh, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is like, it feels, I mean, to me, it's like, wow, the snow just won't stop, but it's, I mean, it's, you know, at any rate, that's neither here nor there, but um, I'm wondering though, with things like snow, right, where it is like a small window, um, you know, could we just, I mean, I know this might be a labor issue, but just like contract, I mean, I know that the boroughs do that, not all the boroughs, but the boroughs do do that. Like they just contract out to folks to come, do the thing that we need to be done today, like this week. Right? And then, the, the, I, I just, I, I, I don't like the idea of like buying a ton of small pickup trucks to plow snow because we have tiny streets when those pickup trucks aren't then useful all year round for something else, you know?
I do.
So, um, that goes back to things that both Councilman Cockell and Councilperson, um, Charlin said that, uh, we, we lease some small duty, uh, pickups during the winter time only for that. Um, and also, uh, we don't, we don't have those smaller trucks that are more nimble to get around the, the tight hills and stuff. Um, because we're faced with a situation that we don't have enough money to buy everything we need, so we need to buy the vehicles that can do the most for us. So like if it's between getting a bigger truck that can do like five of the ten jobs we can do that we needed to do versus a smaller truck that can only do two of them, like, we need to buy the one that can do more work, so. We, we just don't have the resources and we have to get unfortunately creative, um, in order to do that and then try and find as many people to fill those trucks to drive them around when we need them to.
Right, right, okay. And then, I mean, just in terms of the, I mean, I know this is sort of a little, I mean, at, at the end of the day, when it comes to money, right? That, that, that is our department, right? That's what we do. We move money. So I mean, not, and I'm not, and this, this is not something I wanna have to do either, but you know, if we're looking at like twenty-five million dollars a year, I mean, I guess I would sort of challenge every council member to be like, okay, well, let's look at the projects in our district. Let's look at the things that our, that our constituents want and the things that are being done, you know, each one of us and commit to, you know, there's nine of us, like split it up and say, okay, we're gonna cut X from this, which will probably kill whatever that project, you know what I mean? Like whatever that project, or, or leave it to, again, the folks who know, you know what I mean? Who are like their, their entire job. I mean, I know it's a balance, but it.
It becomes extra difficult because, um, we can't use bond money to purchase vehicles, because we need to use bond money on something that will last the life of the repayment of the bond.
Yeah.
If we have our vehicles twenty years later.
So it's all operating then?
It, it comes from Pago mostly and then we use operating for police vehicles because they don't last long enough to be considered a capitalized asset.
Got it, okay.
So like, our Pagos are scheduled to be like five million dollars a year for the next five years, which is, you know, we need Pago for not just vehicles, but like demo could use five million dollars a year.
This is, but see what I mean? Like, so this is why, so I mean, just as council, I'm just in sort of, and, and I get it, like our job is the money, but I just sort of wanna just, at least from my own perspective, where it's like, this is what we have. You know, where are thing, and I mean, yeah, maybe there are things that, that, that could be cut, but but it's, it's more complicated than just sort of in my expert, I mean, you know, I would, I would wanna sit down and like, you know, if, if all of us as a, as a body were like, look together as nine members, we are, we as the folks who are in charge of the money, that is what we are in charge of, is the money. At the end of the day, right? We vote on it. If we all can come together as nine members and say, and sit down with you and be like, okay, where are the things that we can cut to meet this twenty-four, I mean, I, I mean, it, the gap is so huge, but to even meet like a fifteen thousand dollar a year, right? Or a mi- million, sorry. I'm sorry. Um, at any rate, that's just kind of it, yeah. Anyway, I mean, that's my thoughts and it's definitely something that I'm happy to work with other members on, because it is. I mean, the, the, the vehicle, I mean, it's like core city services, right? Like core city services, we need to be able to do the thing, like the streets, the, the trees, the, I mean, I like the litter. I know Councilman Charlin or myself, I would love to see litter added to this, you know what I mean?
I mean, we talk a lot about things that, uh,
The snow.
Yeah, snow and ambulances and fire trucks are things we absolutely need, but like the environmental services fleet is out there every single day.
I know, I know, the garbage pickup.
Yeah, can you imagine like, those, several of those could go down any minute.
Yeah.
And then like, we just can't pick up trash. That's the situation that we're almost in.
I mean, I don't, I mean, it does, I, I, I have not had an issue with trash pickup.
No, but.
That I, I mean, in my, in my time in Pittsburgh, it's al- it's always been something that I've been like, wow, this trash pickup is
That's a huge credit to.
To the environmental services team.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they are able to make do with the fleet that they have and they've pulled out some incredible things, so.
And huge credit to Furman.
I mean, you go to big cities like New York City and go look at their trash pickup situation. I mean, Pittsburgh's really on point, but at any rate. Okay, yeah, that was just sort of some thoughts, but it's, it's definitely something that I'm open to working with members with about where we can, because I mean, that's, that's what it is, right? It's your, it's the budget. We, you know, we have the final say on the budget. We just passed a budget and, you know, we're the ones who should be able to, to find more and say, look, this is, this is the stuff that needs to get cut. Thanks, that's all.
We're still discussing the amendment. Um, any further first round comments for the amendment or we'll move on to second round on the amendment? I know we had Councilman Wilson.
I'll wait.
Okay, Council.
I'll wait as well.
Okay, great. Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending Bill thirteen seventy-eight with the amendment in front of us, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Amendment is approved. Now we have discussion on the bill as amended. Uh, first round, Councilman Wilson, followed by Councilman Cockell.
All right, we wouldn't be Pittsburgh City Council if we didn't see a small agenda in front of us. And uh, wanna talk at great length, because we thought it was gonna be too short of a meeting, so. Appreciate you sitting here and answering these questions and, and um, and everything you do for the, for the, uh, for the fleet. I just, uh, recently learned about some issues with some domie cars and PLI cars in terms of, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
Yes, I do.
Okay, um, let me just, uh, kinda lay this up though. Is that the lot, second, is it Second Avenue Lot?
That's correct.
Yeah, so there's some issues going on and I'm, if you could talk about that, but just tell us like how much that's costing us. I'm just curious what, how that's going.
Um, we are currently experiencing some rodent infestation issues with a few of those domian, uh, PLI vehicles stationed down at Second Avenue. Um, there's a multitude of factors that I believe are adding to the problem. But, or the issues that we in fleet are addressing would be the intrusion into the vehicles from the rodents, how to limit it. Um, how to clean up the mess that is left behind and uh, how to prevent it from happening any, any further, so.
Are you aware of the costs? Is there any costs associated with?
Well, just last week, they.
Because we should preface this by saying they are electric vehicles.
They are.
And there is infrastructure was built for them to be there exactly where we're experiencing the problem.
Yes, um, I do not have the costs.
But are they like repairs being done?
Oh, currently.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, just.
If you could just get back to me on some of those numbers, I'm just curious.
Certainly. Um, but just last week, we've had to order some, um, rat, eh, how do you even say this? Rat spray to keep them out of the vehicles and
Well, being on the parking authority board, I'm aware of some other measures the parking authority is doing to
Great.
Put traps in place and everything.
Um, like I said, from fleet, we are just repairing the damage and trying to prevent any further intrusions. But the, um.
I mean, are we experiencing with other vehicles or just the electric ones?
No, just the domie, PLI specifically, uh, the electric.
We have non-electric cars down there, right?
No.
Oh, we don't?
No, not to my knowledge.
I'm sorry. I, I thought we had more of our fleet down there, just the electric fleet?
I've only saw, seen the electric fleet down there.
Okay, that's good to know. I just, I was gonna, the only thing I've, I just heard that.
It's, it is.
I was aware of that, but then I was trying to do like a quick comparison here. Is there something unique about the electric cars that, as to why this is happening? Cause the unique situations that we can't just like pick them up and move them somewhere. Cause we gotta charge them to use them, so, okay. Just curious on this cost. Thank you.
I'll, uh, I'll look into it in a
Yeah, I appreciate it, sir. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Cockell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just to piggyback off with Councilman Wilson, I'm glad he brought that up about, when we say rodents, we mean rats.
Certainly.
And I don't know why, I, who would've thought rats like to chew on wires? I, I, I have no idea, right? I mean, I thought they just wanted garbage, but, um, so, and it's not the actual vehicles, right? Or is it? Or is it the station?
It's the vehicles. They are.
It's both.
Yes.
It's both.
Rats are getting into the vehicles.
And the charging station, charging apparatus, whatever.
I haven't seen any reports of any rodents actually.
Okay, so it's the vehicles themselves?
Yes.
Why are they attracted to electric vehicles? We don't know.
We have a few, uh,
I've heard of this before, by the way, you know, not before it became a problem with Pittsburgh.
The batteries stay warm enough to, to draw them in for.
And then they figure there's a wire, I might as well chew on it, right?
Oh, they're looking for something to eat at all points in time.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. They do significant damage, we have to.
And they create a biohazard, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just a regular cleanup. A pest control company has to be called in to remove the, the leftovers, so. Yeah, so.
Well, and here's what I also wanted to ask you about electric vehicles. Uh, the last time I remember the, um, garbage trucks. Um, the electric garbage trucks. They couldn't even go make a full round and go back and forth to the dis- to the, um,
Landfill?
Yes, thank you.
Gotcha.
Right, and how are they performing today?
We are still currently waiting on delivery of those units. Um.
We don't even have any?
No, sir, we are currently, um,
So we don't have?
Currently working with the vendor to, to get those vehicles delivered.
Batteries are too big. Yeah, too heavy.
Well, but one of the, one of the things that they've changed is that these vehicles will be used as recyclers, so they won't be making the full garbage ref- or refuse route. And the, uh,
So it's a lighter?
Route is a little shorter, yeah. The haul is shorter.
Yeah, right, right. I thought we already had some in operation. I, I must be wrong.
Um, not yet. We are slated to take delivery, uh, later this month.
And where will we charge those at? Same?
The infrastructure is in place down at the, uh, Environmental Services, yes, sir.
Right, right, right. Okay, um, I don't have a lot of faith in those. I, I mean, and this was going back to the former director, uh, you know, um, what was his name?
Brandon.
Brandon, right, right. Brandon said that, uh, they won't be able to make the full route and go back and forth to the landfill and I'm like, well, what good are they then? I know it's, it's great to be environmentally conscious, we all are, but
We did get a grant for that, so that's.
Oh, okay, well, that's all the difference in the world. That does, that means all the difference in the world for me, as long as it wasn't a matching grant.
We probably had to put some towards it, but it was definitely mostly not our money.
So, so to what Councilwoman Warwick was saying, as far as, I, I think we were asking like, what would it take to get our vehicles up to par right now, a total amount, which is hard to say, but I know we came out with a annual twenty-two million dollars a year, it would be sufficient, but and I'm just guessing, and maybe you have a better guess than me, but if we wanted to bring our fleets up to where it should be, not brand new everywhere, just where we want it to be, I would say, and I hate to use the B word, about a quarter of a billion dollars, I'll bet you, if, if we, um, really wanted to kind of.
One-time full investment?
Yes.
I, 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 I'll do that calculation.
We can't use the B word.
It's a B word. So anyway, I, I feel strongly and I've viewed my opinion many times at this table. You know, we missed our opportunity with the federal money, the ARPA money. Whereas we could've used that money, there's, we're subject to, you know, um, how we could use that. Vehicles was like, have at it. We could've bought a whole new fleet.
That's what a lot of other places did, which is why it takes a couple of years to get a fire truck or an ambulance nowadays.
I know, I know. And, and you know, yeah, that's right, but to his point, right? All these other cities are buying up all their vehicles and that's why our supply chains, it's not a problem for us because we didn't order any basically, so it's not like we're, um, being held up by other cities purchasing all the vehicles, but had we made that investment, which we strongly feel we should have. Not to say we didn't use that money in good ways, you know, went to affordable housing and many other you know, worthwhile things, but again, if the city can't take care of its basic vehicle infrastructure, it's trouble. So, so I feel we missed that opportunity as far as like getting up to that twenty-two million dollars a year. Maybe five years down the road, if we're lucky, I think, but that's wishful thinking. So we're gonna have to keep band-aiding them together, I believe, until the time comes. Um, and one other thing was, uh, Councilwoman Warwick also mentioned about using private plow drivers. Didn't we do that at one point? Did we hire out?
I don't know if we ever used, I mean, back when I was on the other side of the hall, I remember Guy Costa jumping in trucks whenever he was COO, cause he, he had a CDL and.
And that gets complicated. I mean, it really does. You know, you have to know the roads, they hit. And that gets complicated. I mean, it really does. You know, you have to know the roads. They hit a vehicle and it's, it's really not the way to do it.
And I would say that that's outside of ELA and even Furman.
Right, yeah, right.
That's definitely a departmental thing. You get into union issues, so.
Understood, yeah. I agree, I agree. So, uh, that's it, Madam Chair. I just, I had a couple of follow-ups. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 1378, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you all.
And that concludes our agenda. We have a few meeting announcements. On Monday, January 20th, city council and city clerk's office will be closed in observance for Martin Luther King Junior Day. And next week, council will hold a regular and standing committees meetings on Wednesday, January 22nd at 10:00 AM and 1:30 PM respectively, respectively, respectively. And, um, so we will have a double meeting day next Wednesday. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by the deadlines and you may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything remembers? Seeing none, can I please get a motion to excuse the absent members?
Don't move.
Prove the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Let's move to the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.